Call to order the Avon Town Council meeting for nine February 2023. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, would you mind taking roll call, please?
Steve Eisenbarth.
President.
Greg Susan.
President.
Robert Pope.
President.
Tim Roberts.
President.
Don Loudon.
President.
First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes a check register for today, the executive session on January 26th, our meeting minutes from the January 26th meeting, as well as the two performance bonds for Countryside Crossing and Harvest Landing. Any questions? If not, would anyone like to make a motion?
My only comment is I talked to Steve Moore and Betsy Porter today on the performance bonds, and there's a couple amendments they need to make on one of them from the performance to the maintenance bond regarding the countryside crossing.
Do those need to be included to approve our release?
They won't release it until they get the correct information on the maintenance bond.
Okay. Nothing here.
Right, Steve?
Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second. Julie, would you take roll call vote, please?
Robert Pope.
For.
Greg Susan.
For.
Don Loudon.
For.
Steve Eisenbarth.
For.
Tim Roberts.
For.
Next item on the agenda is the first of two public comment opportunities. You may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that section of public comment. Move on to the next item is department updates. Steve?
All right. All right. Steve Moore, Public Works Director. First thing is, we did get our community crossings application submitted. It's a $2 million program. We submitted that for a number of roads, including Raceway Road, all of that, 900 East from the 200 North roundabout to the North Town Limits, Cobble Springs Drive from US 36 to where it transitions into residential, trying to get the business part of it resurfaced. Beechwood Drive from Beechwood Center to the US 36. Here on, the same thing from US 36 to Beechwood Center Road. Beechwood Center Road from the West End to the transition from commercial to residential. Gordon Drive, Alderson Way. And then also, and those are all mills and fills, so it'll be a structural overlay. It'll be not just an inch and a half like we do in like neighborhoods, but it's be a two inch, so it's a little thicker, and then a paving mat underneath that for reinforcement. And then on all of those, to protect that investment, doing a preservative seal on top of it. Then, to protect our 100 South project that we spent millions of dollars on, we proposed to put a preservative seal on that as well. So hopefully, we'll hear about that probably, I'm thinking, March-ish, maybe? Ryan, you think? Yeah, probably hear about it in March. Yeah, somewhere in there. But hope to hear about that. If we get that, that'll be a very cool deal. We'll couple that with our last year's program that we're gonna do this year, and that'll be $4 million worth of paving will get done this year if we get it. So that'd be pretty cool. The 100 North Raceway Roundabout, the design continues. They've completed their storm drainage, so now they can identify the utilities. So they're working on utility coordination and work plans on that roundabout. The roundabout at 900 East and Angelina Way slash Dr. Charles Nelson Drive, we've got updated traffic counts that we took there. And there, actually, I have a meeting on, I guess tomorrow, I have a meeting tomorrow to review those counts, and then the proposed changes in geometry. So we'll see what they come up with tomorrow. 100 South, 150 South in the high school traffic signal has been a pain in my butt for about a year, and they finally got it fixed. We went through three different contractors trying to figure it out. And what we think it ended up being was some splices in the ground that they finally found that needed to be weather protected. And then we also replaced a loop detector card, and it's been working fine ever since, but it took a year. Too long. But anyhow, it's fixed. Dan Jones Widening, we have different phases to talk about. So Phase One, we had the pre-construction meeting today. They plan on getting started in the next couple of weeks. Actually, starting next week, they'll actually do some layout. And so that's starting here shortly. There'll be some utility relocations that continue throughout the next few weeks. By April, everything hopefully will be clear of utilities, and they'll be able to do some of the big work. See, Dan Jones Road Phase Two, we only have two parcels remaining to close out the right-of-way process on that, so that's good. Final tracing should be submitted in April. All documents should be done in July, and then we should hopefully go to project letting on October 12 of this year. Dan Jones Phase Three, we should have the field check plans complete in the next couple of weeks, so then we can go out in the field and just see how it looks like. An environmental and utility coordination now, and that should bid in the summer of 2024, so next summer. What else we got? Stormwater utility. Should I take away? Okay, all right. So.
Just give me credit for it.
Yeah, so Greg actually was reviewing the stormwater billings in your packets, and he said, you know, why are we paying so much for stormwater service, or where's that, what do we get for our money? And I said, funny you should ask, because we actually have been having issues. The customer services isn't what we want it to be. We have some residents that just aren't, a lot of residents that aren't happy about how the billing goes and how easy it is. And so we've asked our vendor to work on those things, but we're also checking into other vendors, you know, what other communities are using. And so Betsy's making phone calls, and she's trying to figure out, you know, if I'd be another solution. So we're working on that now. So that's one of the big deals that we're working on. Not gonna tell the story about the funeral. Anyway, I met a vendor at a funeral. Always networking. MS4, ongoing inspections for all active land disturbing projects. This, the weather we're having right now, surprisingly, we're doing really well. Drew's doing a great job of keeping people in compliance, and so I think kudos to him for what he's doing out there. That's pretty much what I'm gonna cover. You're gonna cover the rest, right? Okay, jump.
Good evening. Keaton Olson, Department of Public Works. I was just gonna cover some of the stuff I oversee, like the salting and snow removal. We, that big event on the 25th and 26th, we had over 250 man-hours from Fox and 352 tons of salt and sand. We've replaced 600 tons of salt so far this year, and we're waiting on 300 more tons. There's some delays, but we have enough to make it through a few big events anyway, so we're good. We've got contractors. One contractor going through a cycle of roadside pickup. I don't know if you guys have noticed the need for that a little bit, you know, some stuff gathering up, so we have contractor working on that. Another one putting back up some trees that were knocked down in a median recently, this past week. Potholes, we've had a lot of pothole action already this new year. We've been out between us and the Grady Bros. We've been at over 35 locations and filled over 50 potholes. And this past week, the department, Public Works Department and Ian from playing in building, we all went to Carrier and Gable for a free signal training. So we all got trained on the signals a little bit. So not quite technicians, but you know, we're all getting there. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Keith.
Good evening. One good evening, Matt.
Good evening.
Thank you. John Taylor, Economic Development. Let's see, just gonna kind of bring you back up to date where everything is. I was out today in Rise Development. Looks like they've got a lot of pipes in the ground, so I'm hoping they're gonna start building soon. That's out on Reagan. That'll be 20 units, uses incubators for small business. DRG or Reagan Logistics, they've got two buildings, one's 712,800 square feet, and there was a project looking at that called Project Sycamore, 213 jobs. They'll have, if they're fortunate enough to get them, they'll be coming in for an abatement, $10,000, $10,500,000 of personal property, and they will add an additional $21.5 million real property over five years. 213 jobs, average wage of $22.75 an hour. Chicago Industrial or Avon Logistics, if you've been down there when we talked about this, the last meeting, I said you need to go down and look. They've almost got one wall up, and now they got more than one wall up. It's exciting to see what's, their other billion, 180,000 square foot buildings totally leased now. They got two companies going in real, which is a third-party logistics company, and Ryder, which is, they're kind of a third-party also, it's what they do around the country. So it'll, much like FedEx and UPS. And then the Van Trust Building, I was up there today, and they were cleaning the street. So I'm guessing they're getting ready to start showing the building. I don't know how far along they are. I've not been in the building, but when I drove up there, they had guys out with shovels getting the mud off the streets, and they had a machine that they were cleaning up in front of the building. So I think that's a good sign. So that's all I got. Anything for me?
And I want to thank Greg for continually pushing me to get that $877,000 grant from the state. I figured he thanked you for pushing him, so I thought I'd thank you also.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Hello, Shelby Marshall with the Parks Department. We were busy in January. Our park staff completed project lifesaver training with the police department, so I want to shout out to them. I talked about it last meeting, but we did complete it in our, so if you were a Rise on a park property, my staff and myself are trained for that. We installed auto door locks on the shelter restroom doors for a little bit of extra safety and security there. It had been vandalized multiple times overnight, so that was just a great way to stop that, and everything's working great with those. We also installed key fob access to our main bar to make it a little more secure. We had our first event two weeks ago. It was the Glow in the Dark Bingo or Bing Glow. We had about 100 people there. Marco's Pizza, shout out to them because they donated enough pizza to feed 100 people that came. It was amazing. Thank you to all of the Riseers, and then Parkside Church of the Nazarene for letting us use their space and having volunteers there. They were awesome. Finally, I would like to thank Lieutenant Steve Barton for providing TAC Med kit training and providing TAC Med kits for each of the Parks Department vehicles. All of our trucks, our four-wheeler, and all four of our mowers now have a TAC Med kit in case the need were ever to arise if somebody was hit with a mower blade or chainsaw blade or any impalement in the park. We now have the procedures in place to take those while first responders are on their way. That's all I have. Any questions? Thanks, Shelby. Thank you.
Great job. Thanks, Shelby.
Jared Wade, Communications Director. Just a few things. First, I've got some sad news to share. Apparently, there are individuals out there that think working for the town is horrible, but luckily, they're wrong. And it's actually a really cool place to work and a really cool place to be. And I saw Greg's face go from like, this was actually not gonna be good, but now it's gonna be really good. A couple weeks ago, we started a new thing on social media called the Staff Spotlight, and Angel is heading that up. What she's doing is she's going out with different police officers, different staff members from town hall, learning more about what they do, and then sharing that information with the community. There's a little bit of work in there. There's a little bit of personal life if they so wish to share, but it's just a great way to show the community, you know, the officers that work here and work here. Here's a look at the human side. Here are the people that make the things happen. So I appreciate her and taking that time to achieve that. Also, a cool little project that we're gonna be starting up, Angel has already started helping with this as well. You're gonna hear me say Angel's a rockstar, and she absolutely is. We're starting a new video project where we're going to be creating, developing 30- to 45-second promo videos for all of the local businesses that are here in Avon. We're gonna produce it. We're gonna make it happen, and then they're gonna be able to put that on their social media. We're gonna have it on our website. It's just a way for us as the town to say thank you for choosing Avon to be your home. Swenson's just opened. I spoke with them. They're really excited about us coming out, recording that, producing it, making it for them. The best thing, and if you're watching online, let your friends know, let your business owners know, zero cost. We're not charging them a dime. This is something that we want to just give to the businesses to say thank you, and we're excited to be able to put that together. With Angel now being on board, that gives me a little bit more time to be able to do some more work on our website. So you're going to start seeing more frequent updates to the website information. Just as an example, today, Governor Holcomb has proclaimed national, Indiana, not national, but Indiana 211 Day on Saturday, February 11th. If you want to find out more information about what that is, guess where you can go? Our website, avongov.org. It's right there on the homepage. You can click on it. You can read through it, and there's links in there that will take you to their website as well. So I'm excited about being able to get more information out about that. Last, but not least, the 2022 Year in Review videos are going to be happening here very soon. If you remember, last year, we did it, and we were able to go through all of the departments, do about a two-minute or less video, just highlighting what happened in the previous year. And then we tried to show it here, and it didn't work, and we're gonna try to do it again, but it's going to work this time. I'm very positive that it's going to work the first time that we try it.
Angel will make certain that it works this time.
Now that Angel's here, it's all gonna work perfectly fine. So we're excited about that. But that's gonna be happening, and hopefully, we'll be able to show those at the first council meeting in March. That's when I'm hoping to have everything done. That way we can show them to you. Lots of things happening, lots of wheels moving. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Website, please, Greg.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry?
Thanks, sir.
Good evening. Sean Stoops, Chief Police for the Police Department. I always enjoy going after Jared because it's, I can't ever compete with his humor, so bear with me.
Is that what they call that?
Yeah, I think that's, it's a public meeting, so I'm trying to be nice. So just want to touch on a couple things from our January calls. You have the report there in your packet. We're in about 1,200 to 1,300 calls for service a month, and just from the years passed, that's pretty consistent, minus 2020, of course, because of COVID. I think an interesting footnote there is the fact that while we've continued to grow economically and residentially, and with our transit population rolling through here every day, we've been able to kind of maintain, from the public safety point of view, those calls for service are staying pretty consistent and not increasing dramatically. So that's, that's good news. And another footnote to go along with that is, in January, I think we had about just, just over 100 traffic accidents, and that's been about the average for the month for the last several years as well. So even though we've had that growth, I feel like our officers are out there doing a very good job proactively to help kind of keep those at least down to the, to the average. So we'll see how long we can maintain that, that level. Our joint narcotics unit, those officers assisted with several undercover operations related to illegal narcotic dealing, and they're working on those cases to make arrests. And you'll be hearing more about that, not just from our community, but from the county. It's a collaborative team. They also assisted with the, the critical incident that took place in the Mosaic Apartments in January, so we appreciate their assistance with that. They also conducted surveillance and investigations into large-scale narcotics operations traveling through our county with this unit via the highways and big, large cargo trucks and vehicles and so forth. And then they also, so they were, played a huge role in assisting our own detectives with the apprehension of the suspects, the suspect that made violent threats towards one of our Avon students as well as that family, and that person was brought into custody pretty quick, and they assisted with that. So we appreciate all their help and everything that they're doing. Grants. Recently, we were just awarded the Hendrix County Substance Abuse Task Force Grant in the amount of $5250, and that's meant to go towards our K-9 program or, or some type of drug prevention and educational program. We intend to use that for our K-9 program since we budgeted this year to increase that program by another dogs to a fourth K-9. We also received the Edwards Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, otherwise known as the JAG, just in the amount of just over $30,000. If you recall, we've been putting in for this for the last several years. The only requirement is we have to kind of change the initiative up a little bit and the name and stuff like that. So it's, this, this year, it's kind of, it's gonna be called the Comprehensive Road Crime Prevention Initiative that we're, that we're starting. Same principle, we're out there in the, in the heavy traffic areas, trying to prevent any type of felony activities, and this goes towards our overtime budget. So in addition to our regularly scheduled officers on duty, this money is intended to be put out there for extra patrols, specifically targeting those areas in need of those extra patrols. So we're thankful for the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute for awarding that grant to us once again. We also received a body worn camera grant. It was just under $1,000. If you recall, we just received that grant not too long ago, so we weren't really eligible for a lot of money. So we were just thankful. We got something for that grant this year. As I indicated a couple minutes, a couple seconds ago, we did budget for a fourth K-9 position in 2023, and we want to congratulate Officer Sam Sims. He was selected to be the next K-9 handler. So along with the Hendrix County Substance Abuse Task Force Grant and two very generous donations in the amount of $5,000 each from one of our local business partners, that $15,000-plus is gonna help us purchase the next K-9 and any additional equipment and anything else that we can stretch that money out to purchase. So we want to thank, they asked not to be mentioned publicly, so we appreciate their partnership and appreciate that donation. We want to commend Officer Parker Rourke publicly. He assisted the Hendrix County Sheriff's Office recently with a vehicle pursuit that entered into our town limits, and Officer Rourke was able to successfully deploy stop sticks in the intersection near Avon Avenue and US 36. That, that deployment actually resulted in the deflation of those tires, and ended that pursuit safely. And the occupants, or occupant suspect driver was taken into custody safely. No one else was harmed. There were no injuries, no crashes, and that person was obviously charged with the fleeing felon in a vehicle, as well as OWI, it turned out. So we want to commend him for that. We also, we don't get to talk a lot about the positive things when, when we talk about pursuits, especially here lately in the news. All you usually hear are the negatives. You never hear the good stories about the successful ending to pursuits. And this is one of the stories, and we're thankful that his quick thinking and quick actions were able to help terminate that pursuit safely and quickly before it entered into a much busier section east of here. The Indiana Crime Guns Task Force for January, they have already started to collect illegal firearms. They've made over 36 arrests, multiple search warrants. They've also confiscated illegal narcotics and currency. They played a pivotal role in our recent incident, critical incident that took place at the Mosaic Apartments. They provided surveillance teams, criminal intelligence, extra personnel to assist our investigators in identifying, locating, and apprehending all of the suspects involved in the Mosaic complex incident. And they did all of this in a matter of about five to six days. We had all of the suspects in custody, and most of the evidence collected, served countless number of search warrants, and they were able to do all of that with the assistance of the CIGIC team. So we really appreciate their help on that. And it also demonstrates how that's not just, that team's not just for Marion County. It truly is for central Indiana, and everything that they did helped Hendrix County, as everything that they do each day does as well. So we really appreciate that and thank them for that. We have a merit board meeting scheduled for February 15th, and they'll discuss the hiring list certification, and our background investigators are already ahead of the schedule there. They've already begun the background investigations and have a couple candidates, I think, ready for conditional offers. So hopefully, we'll be able to at least make an offer on two of our five vacancies. And they'll also do probably some removals of candidates. That's going to probably deplete that hiring list pretty quick, which is gonna require us to do another hiring list. So I'll take this opportunity to plug our wonderful website that Jared has helped develop and tweak. And so please watch that, watch our social media for potential job opportunities with the Avon Police Department up and coming here real soon. So that's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
I don't have anything for anybody specifically, but I want to thank our department heads, and I'd like you to go to your staff. I appreciate their energy, their passion, the way they go on about this. We've come a long ways in a long, in a short period of time, but it seems like it's taken a long time. And even today, when I was in here and they were having lunch in here, everybody wasn't involved, but there was a very good number of them that were there. And, you know, that just tells me that we've got the right people in the right positions. So I appreciate what you've done. The snow fight, Keaton and Fox and our contractor. Continue to do what you're doing, because you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Well said. Moving on, next item, council comment and liaison reports. We'll start with you, Ms. Loudon.
Okay, while the Parks Board did not meet this month, they didn't have anything on the agenda to meet, so that's just been pushed out to a later date. We're not sure when. Friday, tomorrow would normally be the chamber board meeting, but they've changed the date on that to be the following Friday, so it won't now be until the 17th. And then I'm really looking forward to the Crumble Cookie Grand Opening, which will be immediately following that on the 17th.
Mr. Roberts?
Nothing new to report except for Chief Stoops, as he just mentioned, be going to on my first merit board meeting for the Police Department next week on the 15th at 7:00 PM, so I'll look forward to that.
Excellent. Mr. Susan.
I attended the legislative breakfast update that is put on by our state representatives and senators. And then on the 30th, we had the Redevelopment Commission, first meeting of the year. On the second of February, I attended the Hendrix County Public Policy Housing Shortage, Affordable Housing Presentation by MyBoar. I think we've got a lot of work to do there. We certainly, I think, understand that we have an affordable housing need and that we have to continue to address that. Obviously, we were here on the fourth for our strategic planning session. And then I attended the Swenson ribbon cutting. The first Swenson outside of this state of Ohio is now in Avon, Indiana. That's all I have.
Mr. Eisenbarth.
Very similar to Greg, I want to give thanks to staff. Steve, you and Keegan going with those grants. And it's amazing to think that we have a potential for $4 million of paving coming up here. So we'll keep our fingers crossed and really appreciate it. That'd be the largest ever that we've ever had in the history of the town. So that's, that's exciting. I really appreciate the way that you and your staff have been keeping everybody in touch. Karen Gable, Kyle Manley, Steve Abbott over there. Tell them thanks for opening up those cabinets and not scaring the heck out of you when you look in and see all those electronics in there. So that's good. Road School, I just want to see if we know what day we may be going because I want to pick a day maybe when our staff's not going and try to hit those sessions, you know, do that. So I'll get with Ryan and with Steve on that and figure out when that, that's coming up in March, mid-March, which isn't far away. You definitely want to get your reservations in for that. Also, thank you to Chief Stoops and for that K-9 grant, the person, whoever it is, we really appreciate that. That is so nice to have these grants. They give us a lot of traction and it's just, it's hard to say the right words up here from a, from a podium up here. But we, as public servants, we're very much in gratitude to people putting trust like that. And we will try to keep earning your trust as we go on. That's probably the only other thing I wanted to say is while you were talking about the police reports, it seems like we have better progression of vehicles through 36 between Raceway and Shallow Crossing. I don't know if you noticed that, but that seems to be going better. Hopefully we won't have more side swipes in those, those, those less prompt ones or, but it seems like it would really help the rear end. So that's, that's probably enough on that one. That's all I have.
Thanks, Steve. Just a couple of interesting items from the collaboration group meeting earlier today. Township trustee Miller appointed his coworker and campaign manager Danny Brock to the position of Fire Chief. The township plans to implement their transportation van program sometime in the spring when they hash out the details for the use. And the schools have appointed their new police chief. Congratulations to Chief Sam Leahy. And last one, I have appointed to the RDC. We didn't get a recommendation yet at the time. We do now Sheila Glass, the CFO, Assistant Superintendent of Avon Schools. That's it for me. Next item on the agenda, new business, our Youth Civic Engagement Council. Welcome.
Hello. Well, for having us. My name is Zanam Sayad, and I am the president of the Avon Youth Civic Engagement Council. And we're here today to just tell you a little bit more about our group, how we got started, and some community projects that we're currently working on. So our mission is bridging Avon's youth in our community. So I've lived in Avon my whole entire life, and I truly think that this is a place that embodies the definition of community and family. And so while I think that we have such a strong community, I thought that it could be even stronger if we incorporate the youth voice into it more. And so that was the idea that led me to want to create such an organization. And so we wish to get students more involved in the community to truly make a difference. And so we are founded and operated completely by students. We have about 20 members on our council. And so the way we picked which topics we wanted to focus on was asking our student body at Avon. We sent out surveys and we talked to students about what issues they found most prevalent in the community and what issues they wanted to be involved with. And after we got that information, our three committee. So we have the Environment Committee, and there were one, Community Committee, and the Mental Health Committee on a middle school mental health program. So I'll just give you like more in-depth overview of all of this.
Hello, my name is Callie Neal, and I'm the Environment Committee Chair. And so I'm just going to talk a little bit about the project that we decided on. So the project that we decided on is a community garden. And we came to this.
Oh, thank you. We came to this idea, not only would this community garden foster a substance, it's also sustainable agriculture where members can come and grow their own produce. And we were talking about possibly creating a composting bin so we can have lots of different options. But we also found a pre-existing interest both in the youth and in other demographics of our community. So it would, like Zanam said, bridge gap and create another opportunity for us feeling of community and a project that we can work on as a whole. And I'll turn it over to Zan.
Hi, everyone. I'm Samantha Freed. I'm the VP of External Communications. And so so far in our process, we've really just been doing research and planning for our garden. And currently we are meeting with Renee Bence, which is, she's a naturalist at Picard Park, which is where we are planning to have our community garden located. So we've really just been doing research of like, how are we even supposed to implement this community garden, the different costs that that would have with it? And then researching like different ways to get funds to provide for the cost? And yeah.
Unfortunately, someone from our infrastructure committee could not be here today, so I will be speaking on their behalf. But our infrastructure committee has actually seen a lot of different project ideas, had really good ideas, but they just haven't been super easy to implement when you think about infrastructure and having kids working on that. So we've started a new idea, which is a community mural. We want to have local artists and student artists. We have a lot of fantastic art extracurriculars at our school. And so we would love to have a place for all of these students and local artists to display their work. And so we're currently working on sketching out what this road would look like. We would really want it to embody all the aspects of Avon and really give a feel of what Avon is like as a home. And finally, our mental health committee. So at the high school, we are so, so fortunate to have a lot of great mental health resources. We have great workers, we have great clubs, and a lot of kids feel super accounted for at the high school level. But we noticed after talking to middle school students and some teachers that this need is not necessarily met as well at these younger schools. And so we thought that if we could start a high school student-led group at the middle schools, or it's sort of peer mentorship and peer instruction on mental health awareness and coping strategies, that would be super beneficial to these kids going into high school. And so there is a company called Primed that works all across the country. I believe they're located in Ohio. And they work to create this curriculum that students can teach to students. And so that's the curriculum we've adopted and we have a connection with them. So that's how we got it. And so we're currently working on meeting with our mental wellness coordinator. We've talked to different teachers at the middle schools about being potential sponsors for this program. And so we're hoping to implement this program later in the spring. So if you want to be involved, you have any questions for us or other suggestions, or you need any student volunteers for anything, that's what we're here for. So if you have any questions, you can email that email or ask them here. And just thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Is this where we're donating some of that money, $5,000 or whatever to this?
Yeah, we did help assist in the starting of this program with Jim Ditto, who, who was kind of their leadership person. And so that's why I didn't force them to come here. They actually came on their own accord and wanted to give you guys an update. Kudos to them. And I know Robert and I have been to meetings and Jared, and so we do try to pop in and help and be a resource for them as well. So they're, they're doing some great things and they're absolutely great kids. So they're nice to get their input and their feedback. So.
Keep it up. Very well done. Well spoken. Thank you.
Yeah, very much appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda, vehicle purchase and authorized financing police vehicles. Mr. Stoops.
Thank you. This is a request to purchase the first two of the seven that we've already approved previously to purchase, but these are the first two that's getting ready to roll off the assembly line. And we're asking that the council go ahead and approve Mrs. Loker to go ahead forward with securing financing as well as cutting the checks to Kelly Chevrolet for the two, first two that's going to roll off the line in the amount of $83,580. And we would ask that she be allowed to not only secure the financing, but also issue the check once that's ready to go as well. So happy to answer any questions. If you have any other questions we didn't answer when we talked about this before.
Any questions?
Yep. Chief, who's the financing going through again?
That's to be determined by Mrs. Loker. She shops that around and tries to get the best financing for us.
Is this one of these things that we talked about on Saturday that we've already kind of approved in the budget? Why are they bringing it back to us instead of just going out and doing what we've approved already?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's exactly one of those things. And that's what Brian got through in the purchase from you guys last year. But now that they're actually here, we're actually buying them. So that's why we're bringing that. So this is something we can clean up.
The information's good because I appreciate Brian's letter in there, the one-page letter. For Brian, one page, that was great.
But please not watch it.
No, seriously, it was good. And I always appreciate the spreadsheet that shows year by year. It kind of gives us a oversight so we can see how the money is going. So that spreadsheet's helpful, too.
We'll keep that up.
Any further questions? If not, would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request to purchase two vehicles in the amount not to exceed $83,580 through Kelly Chevrolet and to instruct the clerk treasurer to issue a check in that amount of money.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Real quick, do we need to add in that motion to allow her to seek out and seek the financing and secure it as well?
Do we need to include that?
And to entertain the outside financial institutions to provide financing.
And I agree with that.
We have a modified first and a second. Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Greg, Susan?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you very much.
Next item is the Financial Consulting Agreement, which I assume you're speaking to this one, Brian.
Yes.
Greg's not here to speak on it for, on his own behalf.
Yeah, I didn't ask Greg to come. I think you're familiar with Greg Garitas. And so this is typically at the beginning of the year, we do an engagement letter, basically, just like we do with our town attorney, for Greg Garitas to provide us basically on-call services to do our financial advising. It's general, general financial consulting, sustainability, revenue and spending plan, capital improvement plan, TIF, and then our budget. And so Greg kind of helps with all of those things. Typically, his services range from about $40,000 to $50,000 a year, and we do budget for them. And I, we did provide a copy of Tim for you. There's a copy of his resume there and some information about Greg. I know the rest of you know Greg, but.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions if you guys have them. We do recommend approval.
Any questions for Ryan? I've always liked his financial advice. He's kept us sustainable. If there's no further questions, would anyone like to take, make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve FSG to assess the town with the budget says sustainability analysis within the town budget for the services within the price range of 40,000 to 50,000 per year.
Second that, and it's referencing the agreement. Yes.
Microphones.
Sorry. I'll second that, and it's referencing the agreement that we have.
Dan, I'm looking at you. I want to make sure that we've kind of got two separate. I want to help me out here. Make sure that this motion is kosher.
Yeah, generally what we would want is a motion to approve the engagement letter. And then we have already adopted a budget. And so we usually separate those things. So what I prefer to see is just a motion to approve the submitted engagement letter. And then Mr. Cannon has no authority to pay for services by the budget, so that matter's already taken care of.
Okay.
I think the hang up is the amount that you mentioned. Tim, would you mind amending your motion?
I amend that we remove the, the budget amount and that we approve the letter for FSG for the assets of the town sustainability analysis.
And I'll second that amendment.
We got it. Julie, would you mind taking a roll call vote, please?
Tim Roberts?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Next item on the agenda, Resolution 2023-02, Appointment of an ADA Coordinator.
Yeah, Indiana law requires that the town have an ADA coordinator. The only one you've ever had is Ryan Cannon. He is now your town manager. So this would appoint, this resolution, if adopted, would allow someone else to take over that responsibility, specifically Steve Moore. But it's required and it's a very important role, as we know. One of the reasons it is generally housed in the Public Works Department all over is because of the very broad applicability of that to all the town streets, roadside walks and facilities. Certainly it involves every department, but that's why, at least here and in most of my other clients I work with, it's usually the Public Works Director because of that, of that aspect of the ADA.
Any questions for staff?
I think Steve will do a great job.
Care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Raise your hand, pick me, pick me.
You seemed real excited, Steve.
Yeah, he is excited.
Fair enough.
And on a serious note, it is a very good system. So I appreciate it. If you need any stuff from Road School, I'll bring it to you.
Steve, were you going to make a?
I'll make a motion that we, as, as recommended, Resolution 2023-02, that Steve Moore be appointed.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Don Loudon?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is Introduction of Ordinance 2023-01, Remote Work Policy. And I assume you're speaking to this one, Brian or Dan?
Dan. Yes, you know, in the pandemic, we learned that there may be times when our employees need to work remotely. But we've never really had a policy about how that will be managed. And how you manage that is very important for terms of record-keeping, Department of Labor issues, also the ghost employment laws in Indiana. And so what this, this ordinance would do is adopt a policy which would make it clear to both employees and to their supervisors exactly how that would work. It establishes fairly strict rules about when remote policy, remote work will be allowed and under what terms that the request have to be approved by the supervisor, that there's very specific expectations, reporting requirements and, and check-ins during, during that, those times, that this is designed to be the exception and certainly not the rule. But it is a way to allow employees who are sick to, or, or who cannot come to Town Hall because of quarantine rules or, you know, those aspects to still get work done, but report their work properly. So it has work requirements for hours, documentation, the filling and completion of time sheets, calling in, checking in, emailing, checking in, and all the types of things that are needed in order to make a remote policy, work policy work. Again, we did learn a lot, I think, during the pandemic about what works and what does not. This ordinance would establish those policies and clarify all expectations for anyone who would participate either in a managerial side or employee side. This is just introduction. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Dan or staff?
Well, that says temporary. I think that's good. Yeah.
We, we unfortunately had to kind of go into this one blind, so it's good for us to have some, some words written out on what our expectations are. No further questions. We will note ordinance 2023, pardon me, 2023-01 as introduced. Next item on the agenda, Introduction of Ordinance 2023-02, Establishing a Public Safety Local Income Tax Fund. Julie or Dan? Julie or Dan?
Happy.
Dan?
Yeah, this ordinance, you are, you are already receiving public safety, local income tax because of actions taken by the county. The portion of money paid by Avon income taxpayers is now going to circle back and come back. Julie has to have a fund to put that into. It is, you and your budget process have already said what you're going to do with this money. So this ordinance merely creates the fund and you'll see in the text, it simply says where the money comes from, how it can be used, that it is a non-reverting fund. So that means it stands alone and if we don't use all the money from year to year, that it stays in that fund rather than reverting to the general fund. So it'll always be in its own pot of money. And, and so these are the minimum requirements to our articulated new fund. We don't do this very often, actually, but every time we create a new fund, we need to say these things. And this should be probably one of your largest funds before, you know, as we move forward, this has become one of your larger funds. Again, this is just introduction and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dan, staff?
My question is, is we, we're kind of specific where we say including expenditures of and training for the Avon Police Department. I don't want that to mean that that's the only entity that those funds can go to because we've had conversations about maybe expanding some of the services that we're providing the town of Avon. So I don't want us to be locked into just one specific area.
Yeah, it's, it's not in the, in paragraph B, it, the only thing the ordinance says is that the fund will be associated with public safety purposes as defined and by the law, which is really broad. So the reference about how it gets used, it's just a reference.
Because I was looking at above in the second whereas.
Right, I understand. I'm just saying that, yeah, the, the real controlling part is, is what the text actually says.
I mean, I'd rather be a general broad statement, public, public safety as we continue to grow, so.
And that's what, yeah, that's what B says. That's as broad as like we can make it. As broad as we can make it. And then the budget process, you'll make those decisions.
How often will these funds come in to our clerk treasurer?
Monthly.
Monthly?
Monthly. And the last, we have $30,000 already. It's about 15 and some change each month.
Okay.
You will get an estimate from, you'll get an estimated payment every month. And then the state monitors the income tax received and makes adjustments up or down based upon actual money. Right now, we're receiving an estimate and so it could make, you know, we get more, we get less. But that, it comes in every month and you should be able to track that on the reports and kind of see what that looks like. They usually make an adjustment in September. So this works like all your other local income tax funds in that way. You'll get an adjustment, you'll see an adjustment and then in October or November, you will get a letter saying what it will be for next year. That's how that works.
So they give you probably a lump sum forecast and then based on that lump sum, it is divided by 12.
Any further questions?
And this ties back to what you handed out a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you.
Introduce, ordinance 2023-02, introduced. Next item on the agenda, introduction of ordinance 2023-03, bond ordinance. And Dan or Ryan, I assume you're speaking to this one. Please hold. Do we have some hold music we can put on?
Jared has given me more time. I'm going to.
So while they're discussing, I will let you guys know you'll get your first report of the year tomorrow. Calvin and I did close out the books today for January. We rolled, we're way ahead of schedule. We're working on just a couple more things for the annual financial report and we're already done with that as well. Thanks to Steve for getting me all his numbers today and for all the roads and assets and things like that. And yeah, we are way ahead of schedule already.
How much did she pay you for that?
I just had to ask nice and he sent me an email.
Very good.
Okay, I'm back. So the ordinance 2003, 233 is the bond, is a bond, agree, a bond ordinance which relates to the DRG project. So this ordinance, which Ryan is bringing up on the screen, maybe you have the, you have the bond purchase agreement was in your packet and the ordinance just describes the limitations on that as described in the bond purchase agreement. So the scope of the financing for that project, the interest rates that would be allowed and so forth. So this is the same as any other bond ordinance. This is being introduced now. The way this schedule works is a little odd because the EDC will actually be taking action, final action on the bond itself on the 13th, so next week. I'm sorry, the 22nd now. Yeah, the RDC will be pledging TIF funds on the 13th. The only reason this is here now is because it has to be introduced before it could be approved at your next meeting. So the actual bond ordinance and the bond purchase agreement, which Robert will have to sign, won't be approved until next time. But to get everything so that this can be closed by the end of the month, all of the approvals, you guys have to go first introduce this ordinance. And you've been through that process before, but usually by the time you introduce the ordinance, the preliminary approvals by the RDC are already done. This is a little, this is on a compressed schedule because of some long negotiations, but it'll be closed, these, this approval process will be done by the end of this month. You'll come back and do this and the bond purchase agreement next time after the EDC and the RDC have approved it in the interim.
Any questions?
Well, and with that being said, this is not the final format because as Ryan and I spoke today, if you look at this, and we had conversation about this in the past, this is a 10-year bond and they wanted, they being the buyer, the purchaser, wanted this bond to not have any prepayment ability. And Ryan provided me with an amortization schedule today, but he's also going to get us a pro forma that really we could, we could prepay this bond in five years, but I guess you've come to an understanding we could only do it no sooner than seven years.
Right, yeah. Because this hasn't been, again, the first step really should be your EDC approving the final terms. These terms are a little in flux now, as Greg mentions, because your EDC is really the issue of the bonds. You approve all bond issuances by any of your agencies, but some of these final, final terms may change. But once the EDC approves the bond purchase agreement and all of the terms of the issuance, when you see this, these documents next time, they'll all be final terms. And it's just really a little bit of state of flux. It's okay, it's just introduction of the ordinance. Heather James has prepared these documents for us as she always does. We're confident that we'll get to that line and that issuance will be timely. And then again, we also need the RDC to pledge the TIF revenues to support the bond. So you've got two of your agencies working and then it all comes to you at the end. But in order to get it done entirely manually, you have to, we have to introduce the ordinance, even though we don't know everything.
Any further questions, comments? All right. Let the record show ordinance 2023-03, bond ordinance has been introduced. Next item on the agenda, legal counsel report.
I only, I want to tell you that we are, we are busy in the month of January, February, working on training for all of your agencies. We've completed some, but this month will be Board of Zoning Appeals and Plan Commission Training, for example. We'll be training your department heads in March and doing EDC and RDA training later. We enjoy working with your staff, but this is a time where we really try to expand our knowledge to help keep the town safe in terms of a liability standpoint. And so it's very important what we do. So we take it seriously, but I think your staff does, too. Great, great to work with them. They operate at a really high level and I think part of it is the seriousness with which we do the training and participate in the training. So it's, so we're doing that right now and otherwise I will keep you posted on other developments. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Next item is the second of two public comment opportunities. If you'd like to speak, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address and limit your time to three minutes. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that section of public comment, move on to a second council comment. Anyone?
I'd just like to thank the Avon Youth Civic Engagement Group for being here tonight and, and bringing us up to date on all their projects.
Counsel calendar.
Get a little bit of time off. See you next meeting, February 23rd, 7:00 PM. No work session.
Sounds good. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.